Ladies and gentlemen, if I could have your attention, we'll go ahead and get our meeting called to order. It's good to see everyone this afternoon. We'll try to move quickly so we can get everyone out before this rain hits. We're thankful for the rain, but we don't need to be in it. So the first item of business is a couple of public hearings that I'm going to have Rob conduct. If anyone would like to get a copy of the agenda to follow along, they're on the podium right here. You're certainly welcome to help yourself to those. So Rob, I'll turn it over to you for these public hearings.
At the first public hearing we're going to have tonight is on application number PP 22-0017. We do have our ready public hearing procedures, the standards for exercise in zoning powers, as well as joint contract with Ross, our bill was handed out also approached by our website. This application is presented by Bohannon Investments LLC, is typically on parcel number 0027-185. The applicant is requesting rezoning of a .41 acre tract, more or less, located at 818 14th Street, from residential 14th to neighborhood commercial. This time I'd like to ask the council our qualifying questions. At this time, have any of these applicants or opponents to the application contributed at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of property, whether it is a positive or negative impact?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest in any real property that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of the property, whether it is a positive or negative impact?
No.
All right, at this time I'm going to ask Ms. Krzyszczak, Ms. Crystal's a little ill, so he's going to give us a little update as far as what this proposed rezoning is about.
Okay, Mayor Council, after reviewing application PP 22-0017 on June 13th, 2022, the P&amp;Z Commission recommends approval of the application. The applicant, Bohannon Investments LLC, is seeking rezone of parcel T027-185 from R14 Residential to Neighborhood Commercial. The applicant has no official development plans yet, and the applicant mentions the potential for renting the property for professional uses such as insurance agents, lawyers, beauty shops, or any such small business. There's also a possibility of a new construction laundromat on this parcel. The zoning of existing properties nearby is to the north, which is Neighborhood Commercial, to the south, R14, to the east, R14, and to the west, Neighborhood Commercial. The community development department has not received any citizen feedback regarding this proposed rezon. There is a medical office to the north, residential to the east and south, and pool supply company and pharmacy and car lot to the west. Staff recommends the usage of conditional zoning with the following conditions: if new construction occurs, the building shall face Highway 41; signage shall be limited to wall signs or monument signs. And in your packet, very, very comprehensive, there are pictures for you to look at, and I'll try to answer any questions if you have regarding the rezon.
All right, this time I'd like to determine who would like to speak in favor of the application. You all?
My name is John Loder. I reside at 527 Bowen Road, Tifton, Georgia, and I have businesses at 604 and 617 and 610 West 7th Street. This property here, we bought it with intention, when we bought it, with the understanding that it was already zoned Neighborhood Professional, and we did not know it was not. So we've come before the board, before the council, to change that to Neighborhood Professional or to Neighborhood Commercial, whatever it is. And we have intentions of, right now, that we have no intentions of doing anything but changing it, possibly making that into a, the building into a professional office where people, which it is, it can be a retail or office now, but I'd like to make it, maybe make it an office. There is a possibility in the future of a laundromat, but that's something we have not really decided upon yet. So basically, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? There will be no public comment as that public hearing closes.
Okay.
The next public hearing we have is on zoning application number PP 22-0020. Counsel, there was a typo. That is PP 22-0020, not 18. This is, the applicant is 31 North Real Estate Investors LLC. This involves Tifton parcel number 0045-048. This application, the applicant is requesting to amend the planned development overlay for the property located in U.S. Highway 41 North. The applicant is requesting to reduce the size of the planned hotel for the development by reducing the room count by 29 rooms and create an additional retail site. Again, I'll ask the council questions. Have any of these applicants or opponents to the application contributed at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed amendment of the property, whether it is positive or negative impact?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest in real property that would be affected by this proposed amendment to the planned development overlay, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Again, this time I'll ask Ms. Krzyszczak, just to know what this is about.
After reviewing application PP 22-0020 on June 13th, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the amending of the planned development overlay. The applicants, 31 North Real Estate Investors LLC, seek to lessen the size and room count of the approved hotel by 29 rooms and to add an additional retail site, which is parcel J. The PDO approved in 2019 consisted of a 125-room hotel and other mixed uses such as restaurants, retail, et cetera. The applicant seeks an amendment to a 96-room hotel and the inclusion of parcel J, a retail site. The community department has not received any citizen feedback on this request.
All right, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the application. Say your name, where are you at?
I sure will. My name is John Bowen. I live at 2617 Wilson Avenue North, Tifton, Georgia. I'd like to thank the council for welcoming us this evening, for the opportunity to submit this application. Just to provide a little context for the application, when the original PDO for our Tifton North project was passed in 2018, 31 North Real Estate Investors, of which I am a principal, fully intended to develop a 125-key Marriott Courtyard Hotel property on site. The land was purchased in 2019, and we spent the remainder of that year developing architectural drawings, securing financing, securing the franchise, and then putting drawings out to bid for construction pricing. In March of 2020, of course, the environment for new constructions in the hotel industry was completely turned on its head. The franchise was withdrawn, construction financing was also withdrawn. So for all of 2020 and 2021, we basically had to postpone and suspend development of this hotel project. We are now fortunately in the position to close construction financing on a much smaller footprint, which actually fits the supply and demand characteristics of our local market much better than a 125-key property did. And so what we are requesting is that the council approve an amendment to the PDO allowing us to downsize the footprint of the hotel by 29 keys to a new key count of 96, and then to therefore carve out retail space that was originally approved as a part of the hotel facility into a standalone facility. So the hotel key count will be reduced, hotel footprint will be reduced, thereby ensuring that construction financing can be closed, and accordingly, we propose to simply move retail space that was already approved as a function of the original PDO into its own standalone facility. By our estimation, this will create a unaccounted-for or free parking spaces of about 18 in number. So this will have a net positive impact on available parking, and we just appreciate your consideration of the application.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? There are no public comments as that public hearing closes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Rob. All right, we've already called our meeting to order, and I do want to remind those present that tonight's meeting is a workshop, meaning there's only one item that we'll actually be voting on this evening, and that's the approval of the agenda for our remaining discussion. The rest of the items will just be discussed this evening. We may challenge our staff to provide more information, we may ask questions, but we'll be voting on these items at our regularly scheduled meeting on the third Monday at this same time at 5:30 in this location. So, gentlemen, you have before you the agenda. Jessica always does a good job of sending those out, and plenty of time for us to review, and so that's been sent to you. So I'll take a motion concerning the agenda.
Make a motion.
You make a motion, MJ? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by MJ, second by Lester. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Our first item of new business is to hear from Tiff County Fire and Rescue Chief Joey Fowler. Joey, I'll turn the podium over to you. He's going to give us an update on our hazard mitigation plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me this evening. I just want to take a few minutes to update everyone on our 2022 Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is an update. This plan has been in use for many years, and we have to reevaluate this plan on a five-year basis. We're a little behind due to COVID. We actually started this process back in October of 2020 with a kickoff meeting, and several members of the city and the county and different entities were there to help us start this process. We worked with a contractor to help us gather the data and put everything together to present back to us. And this is based off of the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 that Congress passed, which requires every community to have an approved hazard mitigation plan and to receive any financial assistance due to a natural disaster. And this took effect after November of 2004. So the purpose of the plan serves as a guide for community leaders to help make decisions regarding the investment of resources to reduce the danger posed by natural disasters. The update is a result of many months of research, analysis, and discussion. So like I said, we started this process back in October of 2020, and we have had a total of six meetings since then, putting all this stuff together. Took this plan before the county commission last month for adoption, so now I'm here at the city council, asking you at your next meeting to adopt that plan so we can move forward and secure any kind of financial assistance we may need in the event that we have a natural disaster.
All right, gentlemen, that plan is in your packet, as is a copy of the resolution that we'll sign once that's approved. Does anyone have any questions of Chief Fowler?
Mayor Council, this is a very, very large effort.
I think it's five years, right?
Every five years.
Yeah, so a lot of work has gone into this. I know Chief Hyman was involved. Adam and Jeff have been involved. So if there's storms, if there's something happens, this plan dictates how the chief will activate and obviously continue that. But if you did not know, with the retirement of Vicki Hickman some months ago, Tiff County government asked Chief Fowler to step in. He's the EMA director now as well, so doing a great job, and thanks for all the support and the input in keeping us on tabs with storms, weather, and activities within the community. So Chief has done a great job of that, and we appreciate his support.
Well, I will say, if you've not had the opportunity to participate in the discussions that have taken place or seen the implementation of these plans, when we do have issues, it's very comforting to know that all of the agencies come together for the safety and betterment of this community, and so we thank you for that. And it's really, we have among the best of the best that are looking out for this community, so I'm very thankful for the work that's done there. And I know it's, you know, it can be stressful and it can be challenging, but I know that we are in good hands when, if something were to happen. So this plan is so important because that's what we'll go to if something happens, if we have a hurricane or a bad storm or something, so. So just want to say thank you, along with Pete's thanks. All right, any, no questions, y'all good? Okay, good job, Chief.
Thank you.
We're good, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, the next item on our agenda is request to purchase vehicles through state contractors, Adam and Pete. Do you, Pete, are you going to present that, or is that Adam?
I will have a good start.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us on this. As you all know, it's hard to get materials, it's hard to get anything at this point, and we feel like our best efforts in getting vehicles will be to get out ahead of that. We have several vehicles lined up to get this year. There is, I'll just list them out real quick, police department looking for six explorers, the fire department for a pickup truck, community development a pickup truck, public works department, a dump bed pickup truck, the water department a service truck, and wastewater department a service truck. I have reached out to several of the state contract vendors, gotten some packets of information about those vehicles and some other information along with that, and just want to ask that we can go ahead and get out in front of this and try to get these on order. The vendors are telling me that in the next three to six weeks, they will be able to start sending, submitting the packets of information to get the build-outs being done through the manufacturers, and with that, they're only going to be allotted a quota of vehicles. And where that comes into play is, let's say Atlanta needs 60 vehicles, they go to this vendor, and the vendor's only quoted for 45, and we got there behind Atlanta. We're not in the, we're not in the line. So that's kind of, that's kind of why we want to go ahead and jump in and get in tune with this. So I just wanted to kind of present that.
Thank you, Adam. And Mayor Council, he's exactly right. Last year, we just got by by the skin of our teeth trying to find vehicles. In fact, Public Works has lagged behind. We can't find a dump truck, we can't find a service truck, and it's frustrating, and we desperately need to replace some of these. So Adam and I, we've talked about it, we did, we have had discussions with the local dealerships, and there's nothing they could do, obviously. So I'm asking for us to just lean on the state contract this particular year for our purchases, and we get our name on the list going forward. And if we could do that, we'll be in good shape. This is capital monies that are approved in the budget, but I strongly encourage us to do that this particular year.
I have a quick question for you. By being part of the state contract, we would always have the opportunity to purchase these vehicles locally should they become available. Is that correct? Or once we go to state, we're with the state exclusively?
If we go to the state, then we would not, we wouldn't take the bid locally. The state contract is designed, the state actually puts out a bid.
Okay.
Certain dealers are able to qualify and act under a state bid. So we have done it just in the opposite in the past two years. So this would dictate how we'll buy the vehicles this year, and I really, I see that as really the only viable option.
Okay.
I did, actually, Chief Hyman and myself, we've talked to the local dealers, and the vehicles aren't...
They're hard to come by, yeah.
You can't get them.
The other thing that these state contracts do is they get allotted more vehicles because they understand that they have to continue municipal work, continue governmental work, continue that type of stuff. So they're actually allotted more vehicles in the lineup to be able to provide those to municipalities.
So just clarify with, with Mayor, did you say, once we go to state, then going forward, we have to do that?
Not going forward, this particular order.
Just this order. Next year, when they become available, we can go back?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
That's what I want to make sure.
That's what I was, excuse me.
Clear on what the answer was.
Sorry, this is one year, one year alone, and because we're behind from last year, this is only one year, this year's purchase.
So the local vendors understand that?
Yes, yes, yes.
Because our, as you know, our commitment is shop locally and support those that are businesses that are within the city, so.
Yeah, especially with four, you know.
Yes.
They've paid lots of money, but.
We've talked extensively with them, and it's, everybody's a dire strait.
Okay, as long as this doesn't lock us into something that, with another purchase, we...
Yeah, and I'd like to ask Chief Hyman's opinion. Is that, are you concurred with that?
Yeah.
And he's closest, because he, we have the same schedule with the police vehicles, and we've both talked to some of the locals, and again, it's, we may be able to get two or...
Right.
We may be able to get...
Certainly not six that we need, yeah, okay.
So Danny Griffin understands that.
He understands. Mark Bennett, and he's, he's our number one guy with commercial vehicles, and he just, he has nothing, nothing but dismal news for this year.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, you good? MJ, you good? Okay. All right, thank you, Adam, appreciate that. Thank you, Pete. All right, our next item is the potential zoning application for Bohannon Investments. We just heard the public hearing. Is there, this for a property located at 818 14th Street? Are there any questions that anyone has concerning this application? There's very thorough P&amp;Z minutes in our packet from when the P&amp;Z discussed. Crystal, obviously, is not here this evening, she's under the weather, but I think Pete, she's, has been briefed, Pete's been briefed by her, so he could answer any questions, or we could certainly get any answers to questions. Any comments, questions?
I struggle with that one, and I struggle with the, you know, the streets are the buffer. That whole block going both ways is residential. And now we take one parcel, and it becomes Neighborhood Commercial, and, you know, where, where does it stop? You know, yes, across the street's Neighborhood, and across the other street, but that's a tough one. I struggle with that, I'm just not sure.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, gentlemen, any other information? Okay. All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to the 31 North Real Estate Investors' request to reduce the room count for the potential hotel by 29 rooms and to create an additional retail site. Any questions that any of you have concerning that, that application?
I would just add, there's been a lot of activity, and we've worked very close with John and Michael over the last year about this, and things have changed. There's a couple PDO site plans, one is original in 2019, and then we had some field revisions this last year for a pad that they wanted to do, but it wasn't in the original, so we worked through that. And then the third is the PDO reducing the hotel size and adding building J. So this is part of the process. We did talk through this in detail. They understand that, you know, it's a great, great project, and we had all these things lined up in 2019. Certain things happened on certain timelines, and one of the things they've committed to, and we talked this last go-around, is the signal study, making sure the traffic, because obviously this, this development is very, very successful. You add a couple more stores in there, and obviously, people dumping out on 2125 is going, it may cause some, some issues. So they are going to do the signal study, and then the engineers are looking at the aerial, they'll do all their referrals with their engineer about drainage and about utilities, et cetera. So we will take the necessary steps, but I think that it's going to be a great development, and they're in lockstep with what they want to do.
Okay.
I'm just curious, how does, what's the size of the other hotels in town? John, you know that?
Sure. Okay. So our competitive set, we would be directly competing against four guests, overnight guests, typically operate between 85 and 95 rooms. So the original plan to develop a 125-room property was largely due to construction pricing at that time. We decided we had the room, had the land, we were just going to overbuild and hopefully fill it up in the future, and that's just financially unfeasible at this point. So to answer your question, between 85 and 95 rooms.
So you'd be top of them, you'd be one of the largest.
Well, yeah, that's exactly, even at 96 rooms, we will be within, be one of the top two in terms of size. At 125, the originally proposed room count, we were 25%, 30% above the competitor count. But it was just all about the available room and the economics that dominated the conversation at the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much. All right, moving on, the next item for discussion is the Downtown Development Authority's note for the Langford Manor property, and that information is in your packet. I know we have talked about this before, Pete, any updates we need to consider?
Yeah, I'll take care of this. I sent a note out, Larry, and Buck have been going back and forth, Rob has been engaged in this, and this is a longstanding note receivable from 18 years ago between the DDA and the City of Tifton. And again, there's been back, a lot of back and forth, and Larry has been scrubbing these numbers, and it really, what it boils down to, it's just old debt that we have trouble determining exactly what had happened, whose responsibility was, and again, we, Rob and Buck have talked about it from both entities, and we feel it's best that just we both settle the outstanding note with the DDA and write off this as, you know, bad debt. But it's, we've been carrying it with no explanation as has the DDA, so this would be my recommendation.
Okay.
So this is between two, two government agencies?
That's correct.
And like I reported to y'all, I don't, that, my memory, as shaky as it can be sometimes, is that that debt was not intended to be repaid. You know, at that time, the Downtown Development Authority didn't receive SLOST funding, and they didn't have the wherewithal to finance projects that they have now. So this was money that was sort of anted into the pot to preserve that building and then give DDA the ability to do something with that building, which they did ultimately. So I don't think, I think by doing this, it will, one, it will clean up both sets of books for the Downtown Development Authority and for the city, and eliminate that, and then we can go forward without this kind of cloud hanging in the background.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to clear, this is, this is the DDA, this is not...
Right, this is not...
Citywide, not some private.
Right. It's city's investment into itself, so.
This is the DDA that would be not private.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? All right, thank you, Larry.
Good job, Larry.
Good job, Larry.
Well, Larry, really, I mean...
I know he did, I'm picking at him.
He chased it down, and he tried to put all the puzzles together, so he did a great job with that.
He did, he did. He was very thorough. All right, the next item on our agenda is discussion of increased homeless population. MJ, it's my understanding that was something that you wanted to bring before the council, and...
Yeah, just wanted to kind of brief everybody on that, like, I've been getting some calls and concerns of, you know, homelessness in the area, and I don't think we're nowhere near like a larger city yet to have homeless people, you know, here or there, but I think we need to be aware of that, and we need to start bringing all of our heads together on how we're going to address the issue, being that I don't see homeless as an issue because they are human beings and people just like us. And if they do want the help, I think we need to be able to have the resources to say, this is what we can do, and this is what, you know, this is the help we can give. So I just want everybody to know, and the people that do have the concern, we treat the homeless that we do have here now just like the human beings that we are, and we respect them in the common places that they are, but we do know, you know, some may be a nuisance, and we will treat that the right way in the manner that we need to treat it, but also, we're also going to look together to work on those issues, to see what we can do for that rising number of people that we have, you know, coming into town and staying. So I think that's just an ongoing project that I think not only Tifton has, but everybody has that's coming up. And so I think with the team that we have, we can start researching and trying to get some of these, learn about these homeless issues and see what we have and the resources we have that we can do to help.
Do we have a, I guess, a list of resources that are available? I know we have, for example, Brother Charlie's, but what other options do we have, you know, if it's a female, or if it's a family or something? Do we have any comprehensive list, Pete, of resources?
There is a website on, you know, section in DCA website that you can go to, and it'll give you contact information for a homeless person who's seeking assistance. And, you know, a lot of times, those references are to a church or to other facilities that, you know, that try to... or to other facilities that, you know, that try to take in homeless or find them a place to, to stay. And I would be, I mean, I would be surprised if our city or our county has such a contact point for somebody in the City of Tifton or Tifton County. And, you know, to MJ's point, I can see where people could be homeless but not know where to get the information...
Right.
...to find a place to go. And probably the easiest step to take is try to, you know, either be at a nonprofit or some other organization that do look at after the homeless. We've had that contact information available. If, you know, I don't know how many homeless people, get on the website and get, go to DCA, or just, I mean, you could just Google homeless Georgia, and it'll probably pull up.
Well, I'm, you know, and I'm thinking, my goodness, if, if we don't know, they certainly don't know. And so, how do we get that information particularly to our police and fire, who may be the first point of contact, you know, if, if they stop to see if they're okay, or, you know, whatever, to say, here's, you know, here's a list of shelters, or here's a list of, here's where a food bank is, or here's where you can go get a shower and, you know, clean up or something, I, you know...
And that's the problem, somebody could just be traveling through Tifton. And we have no idea what, what may or may not be available, such as Brother Charlie's.
Right.
So, it seems, at least from a first brush at it, is it'd be nice that anybody that is homeless in, in the City of Tifton has the ability to get the information to where they can get help. Because you can be talking about nonprofits, you're talking about shelters, you could talk about Section 8 housing, you know, low-income housing, you know, how, how do they know that those things are available? I mean, Section 8 housing, you know, some folks don't pay anything for it, in Section 8 housing. So, there may be resources out there, things available, but folks don't know it's there.
MJ, is that something you'd be willing to, um, kind of, I mean, I, I don't even know who to, if you want to have another council member help you or whatever, to see what resources we have here? If you could explore that, and then, you know, how could we, um, how could we, as the city...
Yeah.
Put that into a comprehensive list and, you know, maybe reach out, see, when we have someone who needs assistance, how do we get them to the, to the help that they need? You know, um, would you be willing to kind of work on that?
Yeah, on that.
Okay, I would appreciate that. I think that would be, would be helpful. I know we have some incredible nonprofits in this community, you know, with United Way, with, you know, with YMCA, with various organizations, Men's Kids, you know, I know that there's, um, there's a lot of good that happens in Tifton. It's just kind of corralling all that information and putting it in a form that is easy for our police department to have, or fire department, or any of us, um, you know, whether it's churches, you know, whoever it is. So, it's interesting, this was on the agenda, because I was telling Pete yesterday at, at church, our sermon was about homelessness and the, the Good Samaritan. So, um, so if you wouldn't mind sort of spearheading that, I'll turn that over to you, and, uh, knowing that you've got the support of the council, I believe, to try to help in any way and, and, um, anything that we can do to support you in that, so, okay. All right, any, any questions, gentlemen, any other ideas concerning situation?
I'll help, I mean, anyway, you need me to help.
Okay, thank you, okay. All right, moving along, uh, we have our city manager report. So, Pete, what you got for us?
Just a couple of things. Uh, tomorrow, uh, Tuesday, and then Thursday, uh, the Police Department is doing active shooter training. Uh, this will be done at Charles Spencer School, very interactive. And if you'd like to attend one of the shifts to watch them, if you will please just text me, and I'll make sure that you know what the times to go, and we can link up with the chiefs, and you could watch that. This is actually our officers taking part within the school, uh, and going through their, their, um, procedures, active shooter, what to do, uh, and when to do it. So, if you want to see something pretty neat, this is one of the annual trainings that is very, very impressive that, that, uh, we do. And then with the heightened, um, situation that we have, obviously, um, chief and the trainers are going to, uh, take it probably a couple of steps further. So, if you'd like to see that, if you will let me know, we'll make that happen. Uh, there's been a lot of circulation about the Braves Trophy, just as a reminder, July 22nd at 3:30.
21st.
Four o'clock, this will be at the rec center, the trophy's going to be coming, pardon?
It's the 21st.
21st, what did I say?
22nd.
22nd, 21st, sorry. Uh, so, I'll continue to put that out. And then lastly, I wanted to let you know that Ryland has moved into their new facility off of Rebel Road. Uh, this is down by UPS, just to the left of Walmart. So, they are inside the city, uh, and it's going to be a good facility for them. Uh, and they're actually, um, gearing up to do some things, uh, for the community, which I'll start by saying that we talked about recycling, uh, last time. And I really need to get some direction, and if you want to have, you know, two of you to talk through recycling and the compacters, then I could certainly use the help. But I'm, I'm ready to go with that, if you are. At least we could talk through it, make sure that we have all the facts, and then we could bring it back to, to you for discussion. So, but I wanted to share with you that they've, they've moved and they're, they're in the city now.
I, I do think we need to continue to discuss recycling. Um, I'd like to see if there's, um, I'd like to, for, to have two volunteers to, um, obviously, we can't have three, that constitutes a quorum and a meeting. So, um, if there are two council members who would be interested or willing to serve as volunteers to facilitate that, um, Pete, I wouldn't, you know, I would even like to be at that table, recycling something that's very important to me.
I would too.
So, um, if it's, if it's okay with the council, Jack, if you and I want to kind of take that on, and, and, um, I think that's something that we need to, need to continue to discuss. So, you just let us know when they're ready to meet, and, uh...
Okay, thank you.
We'll be ready, okay? All right, what else you got?
That's all I have.
That it, okay? All right, Mayor and Council comments? Um, does anybody, would anybody like to start the conversation?
Just a couple of things. One, Pete, we're on with, um, streets and, you know, with streets for this year, and being in, in, looking at the list for next year, where, where does that sound?
Okay, so, let's start. Uh, the, we did the water lines, you approved that, so, um, I have not heard that, I don't think we're, we're digging yet on those. So, we're replacing the water lines on some of the streets that we're resurfacing. Uh, Jeff is working with Stacy, Stacy Watkins to finish out the RFP for paving, and that should come out, I would probably think, in the next two weeks. Uh, when we'll see, um, bids come around, we'll probably see paving in latter part of August, early September. Uh, I did receive the letter from the state about Elmeg for next year's application, so we'll be working on it. But September, September, I'd like to bring back the remaining streets that we have on our list for you, per district. And then, in turn, you give us the streets that you have, that you've been talking about and hearing about. Let us marry those up. Uh, we'll go out and do our assessment, our grading, bring back the final list, or the, just the list to you. We make decisions based off funding, and we go with it from there. And that, I'd like to be done with that no later than, um, October.
Okay, all right.
Uh, but water lines and pavement are forthcoming, uh, here, uh, within the next two months.
Great, thanks. Um, the other thing is fireworks. And I, there's lots of, lots of discussion, Mayor, and I've talked about it, but I'm getting a lot of questions about, you know, can people shoot fireworks every day of the year? You know, and when is the cutoff, what time? My understanding, and I guess, before I say what my understanding is, let's get the real story, either from Rob or Pete, what, what time is it shut off? And is there any restriction on days that people can shoot fireworks?
I'm not sure, Jack.
I have to go back and look at it, because sometimes, you know, I'm... Can you look at that in, in the next meeting? Because I, State Hall says various things and, and... But I'd be glad to look at it and nail those down, get it to you. I mean, I like to let people, you know, tell people, this, this is what State Hall says, and we don't have control over a lot of this, so, okay, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Anybody want to go next?
I'm good, you go ahead.
Oh, yeah, for myself, I just want to, um, kind of ask a question. I don't know if it's for Pete or, or one of the chiefs. Um, I noticed with Forests Homeless, uh, on 82, uh, the, under the bridge, someone has pitched a tent, um, that's living under, uh, on the side of the bridge, over on, uh, the right side headed, uh, towards Hovin, direction-wise. So, I just wanted to find out what was the protocol for dealing with, uh, when someone just creates a home on the side of the bridge or under the bridge? Um, because it was brought to my attention by a few people, so I wanted to find out what's the protocol of handling that situation there.
Yeah, a- anything on, on public or right-of-way, public places, public land, right-of-way, uh, it'll be removed. And, uh, and sometimes we, we could help them along, gather their belongings and, and go about their business, but, uh, that, that particular, um, tent and all that was removed.
Okay, just wanted to double check, thank you.
Good question, okay. All right, any other comments, Lester?
That was it.
Okay. Josh?
I'm good.
Good? You good, all right? Well, I just want to say congratulations to Abby and the downtown team for an incredible rock the block. It was, it was, um, a long time coming. We got rained out the last couple of years, and it was so good to see everyone downtown, everyone had a great time. Uh, we had our toast to Tifton. Um, Friday morning, we honored Colonel Ralph Puckett, which I was so thrilled that everyone was able to be a part of. And, and he is truly a national treasure. And to have the opportunity to meet him and spend a few minutes with him, and, and, um, his family was, was certainly, um, the highlight of, of my, of my Fourth of July weekend, I can tell you that. And he was just so thrilled, the family was so kind and so thankful. And, uh, so I'm really, you know, so many times, we honor people after they're gone. And so, I'm really thankful that we were able to honor him, and he could be a part of it, and his whole family could be a part of it. But they were just so kind and so humbled. So, um, there's more 150th stuff coming up, so just listen out for that. We've got, uh, some other things that we'll be doing, so continue to support that and, uh, share the information as it comes out. So, um, anything else we need to discuss, Pete? Rob, no executive session?
No.
All right, well, seeing nothing else to come for us, we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.